August 13th, 2025, and I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local cable channel 8 and 1072 HD. If we'd like, could we all raise the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Next, does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, please check in with Mary Ann, two to my left, and you can have three minutes to make your comment. Anybody in the audience have anything to say that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, thank you. All right, um, public comment, if for some reason I do not reach out to the public, which I hope does not occur, please feel to free to speak up. We certainly want to hear your comments if you choose to speak. Next, Charlie, would you please read the first continued hearing into the record?
I will. Continued hearings for the date of August 13th, 2025, 45 Hoop Pole Road. Owner Carlos Hansi requests a special permit under 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace a single-family residential structure with a new single-family residential structure on property located in an R3 zoning district and groundwater protection district map 64 parcel 19 Mashpee, Mass. Continued from June 11th, 2025, hearings at the request of the attorney.
Think there's a letter that we have in reference to this filing?
I got it right here if you want.
Could you read it, please?
Yep, we have a letter. From Kevin Clower to Mary Ann Romero, petition for a special permit, 45 Hoop Pole Road Mashpee, August 8th, 2025. Dear Ms. Romero, on behalf of the applicant Carlos Hansi, I am hereby requesting to withdraw the above referenced application for a special permit without prejudice. It is the applicant's intent to resubmit this application. Once the conservation commission application has been completed and reviewed, I would ask that the board allow this request. Please do not hesitate to contact me if there is any questions or if additional information is required.
Mary Ann, did he sign anything in reference to this? He doesn't have to at this point? Okay.
No.
All right, so can I get a motion to accept that letter for a withdrawal?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. George, would you like to read 45 Manitoba Road into the record, please?
Sure. Forty-five, new hearings, 45 Manitoba Road. Owner Chase Anders Vajkovac and Jessica Lynn Vajkovac request a written finding under section 174-17 and 174-33 zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a 240-foot square foot addition, replacing an existing deck on property located in R3 zoning district, map 125 parcel 81, Mashpee, Mass.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Evening. Steve Cook from Catuah Bay Design, representing the Vajkovacs. This is a project, pretty straightforward project. It's a pre-existing non-conforming house in an AE flood zone, elevation 11. The project involves adding a new rear addition, a side addition, and rebuilding the front deck. All construction to be flood zone compliant. Both additions need zone and setbacks. The lot coverage, which is 13.8% now, will increase to 18.7%. And these, uh, this project was approved through conservation. Pretty straightforward.
Okay, Charlie, any letters from agencies, et cetera?
The Board of Health and we have Conservation. Conservation. For 45 Manitoba Road, owner Chase Anders Vajkovac and Jessica Lynn Vajkovac request a written finding under 174-17. And Board of Health response, Board of Health, house to remain three bedrooms, one on the first floor and two on the second floor. Change in footprint requires a Title V inspection to be completed. And we also have, uh, correspondence relative to the Conservation Commission, relative to 45 Manitoba Road. Resource area, LSCSF. NOI application was approved with the unanimous vote by the commission due to flood compliance foundations and increase in naturally vegetated areas on the property with conditions to revise planting plan with ground cover and anchor the shed to the ground.
Is that the extent of the letters? So, board questions? I have a couple, but if somebody else wants to start, feel free. All right, so there is land subject to coastal flow, a drive flooding. So that being said, how did you calculate lot coverage?
The engineer calculated lot coverage with the new additions, the deck and the house. That's what I'm assuming. I didn't have contact with the engineer, so.
What percent of the lot is?
Yeah.
What percent of the lot is subject to coastal storm?
Hundred percent of the lot.
Uh-huh, so the way we've been doing this, Steve, just to let you know, is hundred percent of the lot, so really you're a hundred percent lot coverage, right?
Correct.
And at that point in time, you should, all right, so that should be depicted on the plan? So that you're a hundred percent lot coverage? And then you go down, building coverage is a good way to deal with it, I guess? Because maximum's 20, that's the old way that we've dealt with it? Am I correct? And, but you've got to make a note on the plan. As far as I'm concerned, the plan can be corrected. You know, without having to come back to the board. As one person on this board, you have to say that lot coverage is 100% somewhere. Okay. Because the 20 and the 13.8 does not go with a year ago court case that we lost.
Correct.
Just to say, and so somewhere in this plan, it has to, it has to states clearly that the lot coverage is 100%, okay?
Yeah.
All right. We can put that note.
Does everybody agree?
Yeah, it goes from 100 to 100. And then the old way, it goes from X to Y.
So you're going to show 100 existing, 100 proposed? And then you're going to show, you're going to show building coverage, 20%? You know, there is no maximum. Just say building coverage existing, 13.8, proposed 18.7. Take the maximum out because there is no maximum. Because it's technically not a zoning issue, it's for the board to understand. So there's nothing in zoning that says you have to give us building coverage. But we need to understand that, just so that we understand we're not getting to the McMansion issues.
Do you want to see the existing and the proposed building coverage?
Yeah. Correct, but not maximum because there is no maximum. All you want to depict is, is 100% lot, in this case, it would be 100% lot coverage pre and post. And then it would say existing 13.8, proposed 18.7. Okay, so we'll get rid of that maximum number, so.
I think in this case, we can, he can resubmit.
All right, yes.
With the corrections for you to sign.
Yeah, I think we can manage this without having to come in another meeting. But that's one member's opinion.
Yeah, I agree.
So let's talk about roof drainage. Just trying to look, I am kind of a stickler on that, right? So.
Yeah, he's not showing any drywells on there, but I'm not even sure if there's, right now, there's, um, it's just drip edge, there's no gutters on the house at all? It's all stone around the house? If you look at a photograph.
So who, who?
You have photographs?
I haven't seen them.
No, but I went out there, there's no lawn, it's all crushed stone.
Yeah, but with the additional roof lines, we should be, yeah, gutters would be an issue, wouldn't they?
Yeah, so I'll drip onto the stone.
So Steve, I have a question. You got a proposed addition and a proposed deck on one side?
That is an extraneous note. The deck is going to be just replaced in the same footprint. The deck is failing.
On the other side of the house?
Yeah.
There's also a proposed addition? So there's two proposed additions and?
Yeah.
A replaced deck?
Correct. Yeah. Rebuilt deck is the key word. And part of the existing deck is being removed for that side addition, it's going to go in that footprint. You can see there's a dash line right underneath it, so.
Anybody on this board aware of any flooding issues on Manitoba Road?
Run that by me again, Steve. There's a dotted line that goes through?
Yeah.
Proposed addition on the white, if I'm looking at it?
Right there. So this is an existing deck. So this new addition is sitting on that existing deck, it just grows a little bit.
By the way, where is the water?
This isn't water.
It's over here on this side or?
This isn't waterfront.
Way down the street, this way.
It's not waterfront.
Not on the water, it's the whole area is in the flood zone.
Yeah. Okay. So again, nobody on this board is aware of any flooding issues on Manitoba?
Not off the top of my head, no. Not like squalls.
Yeah, because I can tell you, I mean, I get the.
I don't drive down the road.
The design is basically, you know, collection from the, from the fact that it's not loomed and seated, right? That's the only area, there's no drywells in this plant. But. All right, any other board questions?
I got a couple. Uh, Steve, the fireplace, is that cantilevered? I'm looking, it doesn't really, because there's no framing plan. This site plan does not show cantilever, but this does, it doesn't show, I mean, a, um, like it's a found in.
No, the fire, uh, I was showing a cantilever fireplace, but we're going to remove that. It's just going to be set inside.
Okay, well, that should probably change on the plan there because.
But it's not, it's not showing it on the site plan.
It's not, but on the elevation it's showing it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to change that. I'll probably, you know, change a couple of windows also too, you know.
The windows don't matter. So we got to make note of that, that the fireplace cannot be extended beyond the footprint of these plans.
You can't sign that.
Or you can, you can condition it.
I get it. Historically, the board was willing to condition a plan, now we're conditioning two plans.
Well, that's not the only issue I have, I have two.
Okay.
That's why they pay me the big money. On the site plan, you've got 10 foot five, that's the bulkhead, that don't count. You got 11.5 to the, calling it a deck.
Yeah, just the egress stairs.
It's the egress stairs. I don't know if that, Dave, maybe you can answer that? Do we count the egress stairs in the setback? Because the, the new deck is 14 feet off the lot line, not 50.
You allowed, um, you allowed four feet of an egress, an egress stairs.
I get that, but do we count that for the setback? Because they're using 11, I think they're using 11.5 as their.
Pre-existing non-conforming.
I don't know if that's a correct.
Well, it seems like 14.5 is the house.
Yeah.
But the deck is 14, the new deck, this is new deck, right?
No, it's rebuilt deck, it's there.
Oh, that's a rebuilt deck?
It's existing.
Oh, okay, then my.
In the same footprint.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, then, then there's no, then I don't have an issue with that. Okay. The way this is drawn in here, it looks like it's a new deck.
Then we got to amend your plan, and then we got to amend the engineer plan.
Yes.
So, so far.
The engineer plan has to be amended, you know what it needs, Steve.
Yeah, I'm going to just get rid of that fireplace, it's going to be set inside, so.
All right, any other board questions?
My only two concerns.
Just to give you guys a little history on this, um, the clients and their engineers submitted for Conservation Commission. They didn't have to realize that they had to come in front of you guys. And they called me in a panic the night before filing deadline or night before the conservation. So I filed this quickly, so I apologize if there's any discrepancies on the two plans, so.
All right, well, so, so far, I think we're okay if we have to amend both those plans. Any other questions from the board? All right, David, thoughts, please?
I'm all set.
You're all set? Okay. Do you have any input? You're okay with the application?
You dealt with the anomalies of the.
Yeah.
Of the.
Lot coverage.
Yeah, you dealt with that stuff, so, yeah, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Audience, anyone in the audience have anything to say about this application? Okay. Going to go back to board questions?
Nothing.
Nothing, all right. So then, Steve, you're aware you're going to have to amend two plans, your plan that you've drafted and this plan, and you know how to fix that.
Correct.
I would presume, is the board okay with me coming in and signing both of those plans once they've been amended and approved?
No problem with that at all.
Yes.
Okay, so I presume the motion should include that? And you want to be specific about the two plans?
I'll be specific about that the plans will be submitted in accordance with the discussion at the hearing, amended in accordance with the requirements.
So do I have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, do I get a motion to reference the application? Please don't forget those two things.
Okay. Motion relative to 45 Manitoba Road. Owners Chase Anders Vajkovac and Jessica Lynn Vajkovac request a written finding under 174-17 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a 240-square foot addition, replacing an existing deck on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 125 parcel 81 Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions, motion. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Laws 40A, section six. Number two, plot plan, 45 Manitoba Road, prepared for Joseph Foster, prepared by all Cape Septic and survey, date May 2, 2025, stamped and signed by Stephen Moore Land Surveyor, number 39808. Building plans. Number three, Vajkovac Residence, 45 Manitoba Road. New addition prepared by Catuah Bay Design LLC. Scale one quarter inch equals one foot. Date 5/20/25. Drawing number A1, first floor plan, A1, front, left, rear and right elevations. Number four. Condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Conservation Department and Board of Health, and also conditioned upon submission of modified plans relative to the fireplace and the calculations as discussed at the time of the meeting and hearing tonight. Such plans to be submitted to our chairperson, who will have authority to sign them. Any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board.
Other than those two?
Other than those two. Conditioned that the applicant seek and obtain the building department review in reference to the tree bylaw, uh, chapter 175 of the town bylaws prior to the application of the building permit. The board finds under 174-17 and 174-33 that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or use to either the town or the neighborhood.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, just make those changes, give them to Mary Ann, and I'll come in and take care of it.
Great, thank you. How many copies you need?
How many copies do you need, Mary Ann?
Uh, three, please.
Three copies, okay. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. That's it.
Oh, you got five?
Oh, fine.
Bill's here.
Five regular members, see that?
Wow.
First time in a long time.
All right, Kaz, would you like to read 8 Hoden Road into the record, please?
Sure. 8, Hoden Road. Owner Edward J. Farley requests a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a second floor addition to the existing house. A deck to the easterly side of the existing house at a roof over the stoop at the front of the existing house and a detached garage with an ADU accessory dwelling unit above on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 125 parcel 123 Mashpee, Mass.
Thank you, Kaz. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, Attorney Christopher Karam, representing Ed Farley, the applicant. This project was before this board at their last hearing, and there were two, um, two items that came up. One was, there was some confusion of, about the public hearing notice because it had not sufficiently described all the proposed alterations to this property, specifically the garage with the ADU. Understanding that the ADU specifically isn't under the jurisdiction of the zoning board, however, there is a structure going up that, you know, presumably should be included in the written finding into the public hearing notice. And then the second issue was.
Glad you'd appreciate that.
So, and then the second issue was stormwater management. Uh, so I know Raul from Cape and Islands submitted a drainage calculations. He is currently tied up in a hearing before the, or the Wellfleet Conservation Commission. He may, he may, he's going to try to make it tonight, so if the board, you know, feels strongly that they need to hear from him, you know, we could.
I thought he was playing with me.
Uh-oh.
The drainage calculations are like four pages.
I know.
All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That was for you, you know.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You know, if the board feels strongly that they want to, they want to hear from Raul, uh, you know, I think he's going to show up at some point tonight. Um, as I said, he's just tied up. Otherwise, the project is pretty straightforward. There's some additions to the existing dwelling. Our non-conformities are only because we're in the flood zone. So we're 100% lot coverage, we're inside, we can't meet the 50-foot setback. But the structure, the existing structure and the proposed structure will meet all your dimensional setbacks. So it will comply with the side yard, comply with the rear yard, although I would say there's no rear yards on this one, no side yards on this one because we front on two roads. So fronts, front yard setbacks comply for both the proposed structure and the existing structure. The rear yard setbacks conform to both the proposed structure and the existing structure. Our lot coverage is 100%, but under, you know, building coverage is well under the 20%, which would otherwise be required in the R3 zoning district. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. You know, again, if the board feels strongly they want to hear from Raul, you know, we can table this until he gets out of his other meeting.
Definitely an odd-shaped lot.
Yeah.
Wow, he's now using NOAA in his drainage calculations.
I think I told him.
I'm impressed.
I think I told him that when I emailed him after the meeting.
Wow.
The board would prefer those calculations.
Yes, I would, very nice.
But as I say, otherwise, you know, the, the additions to the house comply with all setbacks. The garage with ADU complies to all your setbacks, um, you know, other than the lot coverage and 50-foot setback.
All right, um, Kaz, you want to read some of the, any, any letters into the record? Do you have any?
I've got them right here.
Yeah, the only thing we need.
We have Board of Health and Conservation.
Yeah, why don't we read those into the record? So I'm looking at a drainage calculations.
Yeah. Board of Health, Septic is designed for three-bedroom. Floor plan shows three-bedroom.
And that was a Conservation. Conservation, that is right down here.
Conservation, owner.
Yeah, right here.
Number seven, 10, application was approved due to proposed location of addition and ADU in previously altered areas and no disturbance to native vegetation will occur for construction.
Yeah, it's a pretty, basically this whole lot is lawn area.
Do we have anything else?
I don't, no.
That's the extent of the letters, Mary Ann?
That's it.
Okay, so, board questions? Babbity?
Not me.
Okay.
Just a quick one. For Dave, I think I know the answer. If you're doing a full remodel and the house is at elevation 11.7, does any of these new FEMA rules affect that if you're just as a remodel?
No, this seems like to me it's, it's going to be a substantial improvement, so that might, um, have major implications on the house.
Thinking for the homeowner, they don't have a problem when they go to pull a permit, is this?
Yeah, I mean, they have, obviously they have a, um, they have a full sub-basement, which might have to be affected. The house might have to be raised up.
Chris, you know, obviously where I'm going with that.
Right.
I just don't.
What does the actual bylaw say about?
Not a bylaw, it's in the building code. It's not, um, the fifth, it's not in the bylaw, it's not a zoning issue, it's a building code issue.
I'm just trying to protect the homeowner from having a problem.
Yeah, it, to me, it's, it, this is more than 100%. They're putting a second floor on?
Uh, there's a, one, there is a second floor addition, so. It may, I mean, again, that's something that the homeowner has to submit documentation to David.
It's not a zoning issue.
It's not a zoning issue, but.
Sounds like you might want to talk to him, though, because it may be above 50%, and you may have to do some, a lot of things.
Yeah, I mean, I think the homeowner's.
You're right.
It's a small ranch.
Yeah, I understand. But again, that's a building code floods.
It seems like it's more than 100%, so that triggers all, that has to be in full compliance.
Again, they'll have to submit estimates and proposals for numbers to David, and he'll have to make, and an appraisal and things like that, and he'll have to make that decision.
So David, do you have any comments on this application? Other than that?
As far as zoning, uh, no, the zoning can, is up to you guys.
Audience input, anybody in the audience who want to speak about this application? Okay. Back to the board again, any comments?
No, just a.
No. All right.
Issue that David's.
Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
So in reference to the motion, I guess it's pretty straightforward, then. I don't think there's any.
I got it right here.
Yep, there you go. All right, so could someone please make the motion? I'll do it, this is the application.
Number eight, Nahoyden Road. Owner Edward J. Farley requests a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a second floor addition to the existing house, a deck to the easterly side of the existing house at a roof over the stoop.
I bought them.
At the front of the existing house.
I thought you just.
And a detached garage with an ADU accessory dwelling unit above on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 125 parcel 123 Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions, motion. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Laws 40A, section six. Number two, site plan, prepared for Edward J. Farley, 8 Nahoyden Road, Mashpee, Mass. Sheet number one of one, date May 8th, 2025, revised 7/11, 2025. Revised drywall design, prepared by Cape and Islands Road. Stamped and signed by Matthew Costa, number 52282. And Raul Lizardi Rivera, civil engineer, number 46845. Design plans, A1-01, first floor, second floor, A1-02. South elevation, east elevation, north elevation, west elevation, A1-03. ADU first and second floor, A1-04, ADU elevations. Number four. Condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Conservation Department and Board of Health. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the building department review in reference to the tree bylaw, chapter 175 of the town bylaws prior to the application of the building permit. And number seven, the board finds under 174-17 that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or use to either the town or the neighborhood.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
You are welcome.
He likes the drainage calculations.
Oh, good, I'll let Raul know that.
Oh, yes.
He should submit those for every project.
And he should use NOAA, everybody should use NOAA.
Thanks, everybody.
This has generated a little bit of activity. Only has one time.
Bill?
Hmm?
Bill?
Oh, yeah. George.
All plans sealed and delivered.
Sign sealed, all of that stuff. So, I am presuming the next application was filed, the appeal was filed, and then you advertised for a variance in case the appeal didn't win, correct? Then the variance was already filed for.
I had to re-advertise the variance because it was, I had to show the lot coverage by law.
Right, yes. But I'm saying, the reason why there's two filings is because if this board finds in favor of David, then we can go to the variance.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, we really should do them separately, right?
I think so.
Yeah, I think it's the only way to do it. All right, so, Cas, you know what? You've been, you might as well just keep her going, right? Would you write literally 291 Monomuscoy Road, the actual commissioner's decision on that, please, the first one?
291 Monomuscoy Road, owner Jacques N. Moran, trustee, 291 Monomuscoy Realty Trust, is appealing the building commissioner's determination on the MGL Chapter 40A, 8 and 15. Applicant is aggrieved by the building commissioner's letter dated June 9, 2025, that the proposal to develop a single-family dwelling on property at 291 Monomuscoy Road requires variances from structure lot coverage 174-3116 and setback to wetlands 174-33 located in the R3 zoning district, map 120 parcel 94, Mashpee, Mass.
Counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Brian Wall. I'm an attorney, I have an office in Sandwich, and I'm here tonight representing the appellant, the petitioner, Jacques Moran. And Mr. Moran and his wife are here in the audience with me. So, this is pretty much as the notice of the hearing was held, as was read. My clients own a piece of property at 291 Monomuscoy. That property is 5,001 square feet and has 320.46 feet of frontage. So, it meets the minimum requirements under the state statute of having 5,000 square feet or 50, and 50 feet of frontage for protection under 40A Section 6. What my clients would like to do is construct a single-family dwelling on that property. They own property right next door, not touching the lot, nearby. This particular lot, in my letter, I've made the case, has been in separate ownership since prior to the adoption of zoning. I don't, I don't want to speak for Mr. Morris, I don't think he disagrees with that contention. But what happened was, when he reviewed the situation, he determined that in order to proceed, he could not issue a building permit, that Mr. Moran needs to have a variance from structure lot coverage under Section 174-31 footnote 16, and also a variance from the setback to wetlands 174-33. So, what our contention is, is it's rather straightforward. Chapter 40A, Section 6, sometimes called the grandfathering statute, has language that says that a lot that's held in separate ownership that is protected from what's called increases in area, frontage, width, yard, or depth. And so, our contention is, and I'm gonna take them one at a time, I'm gonna talk about structure lot coverage first. Our contention is, is that structure lot coverage is essentially one of those things. It does not say area, frontage, width, or yard, or depth.
Which one of those things, if you don't mind me asking?
We're gonna make the argument that it's an area requirement. And because when you read, when you go to your bylaw, first of all, Section 17431 is under the heading called land space requirements. That's, that's the section it's in. And what the, what the section does is, it says that when you're calculating lot area and lot coverage, I think we're all familiar with this, is that the bylaw says that property owner must exclude from the area calculation any and all wetlands defined by the Wetlands Protection Act. And in this particular property, the land is what's called land subject to coastal storm foliage, it's a wetland under the Wetlands Protection Act, sometimes it's called the flood plain. And so, our contention to you is that by excluding, so, let's say you have a lot that's 10,000 square feet and half of it's wetlands, so you have to exclude half, and the lot becomes 5,000 square feet. For zoning purposes, it's actually 10 total. And so, our contention is, is that by excluding wetlands, it's increasing the area requirements for property owners to come to Mr. Morris and apply for a building permit. So, they need more area if they have wetlands. And so, our contention is, is that it's protected under 40A Section 6. And in my letter, I know this is not a court of law, and you may choose to have your town council opine on this, I did cite a case called Cham Sedine, if I'm saying that right. It's quoted in my letter, it's a case from Taunton from 2007 that went to the appeals court. And what I wrote in my letter was, I said, I'll just read a sentence or two, if I may, Mr. Chairman. The appeals court treated an increase in the amount of contiguous upland. So, if you think about contiguous upland, what's that? It's not, it's not a wetland. So, Mashpee uses the word exclude wetlands, they could have easily said contiguous upland. And so, what the appeals court said was that an increase in the amount of a contiguous upland required has a change to the lot area requirement in applying the grandfathering protections under 40A Section 6. So, in other words, this Cham Sedine case, if I say it more in English than legalese, the town of Taunton required a certain amount of contiguous upland, i.e. not wetland. And the appeals court said that's a change in the lot area requirement, and the property owner was protected from that increased area requirement in Taunton. And my argument is, is excluding wetlands is, it's an antonym of upland. So, we're excluding wetland so that we have on wetland area, which is upland. It's essentially the same thing. And so, my argument is, is that it's, it's an increase in an area requirement, and there's case law that says that that's protected under 40A Section 6. My argument, Mr. Morris has said that two variances are required, the other one is from the setback to wetlands, which is 174-33. And I have an argument outlined in my letter there, that the setback to wetlands is essentially an increase in the area requirement because there's an area of wetland that then must be set back from. So, the area of wetland takes away area from the lot and then increases that requirement by set, a setback from that. And an alternative kind of side argument to that is, it's a setback. And so, if you think of, you, every single day, the hearing before me, you were talking about it, this board routinely talks about front, rear, and side yard setbacks. And what those setbacks do, as you well know, is it limits the area that can be developed. It says you must be set back from these various things, and your bylaw also has a setback to wetlands. And so, my argument is that's a yard requirement. So, the first one's an area requirement, and the second one is a yard and an area requirement. And our contention is, is that this lot, which has been in separate ownership since prior to the adoption of zoning and prior to the adoption of these two sections, is protected from these increased requirements, like any grandfathered lot would be protected from lot area or side front and rear yard setbacks. Now, I know there's another case, Mr. Karain had a similar case to this, I know that he applied for a variance. I watched some of the hearings, I saw some of the discussion. I'm aware that your town attorney has issued an opinion on this matter, and I talk about that in my letter as well. And what I would simply note about that, and Mr. Morris can tell you, we were in court on Monday with Andy Questle, I respect her tremendously. But her opinion says that it's her opinion, she talks about the front, rear, and side yard setbacks, and she basically says that since those words aren't used, it's not one of them. But she concedes it's her opinion, and she also concedes that there's no case law on that. And I think there is case law on the exclusion from wetlands section, the case I cited. And I think that the argument about wetlands follows that. And so, I know that she's made this opinion, but I think that she was less than emphatic, and I think that she's indicating to the board that there's some wiggle room here for you to think about this. And so...
I'm not seeing that aspect, but...
Okay. Well, I'm giving you my opinion.
Yeah, no, no, I, and I understand why you'd give that opinion, I just don't see that there's any wiggle room in her decision, and I think her decision is counterintuitive to your thinking.
I don't know if I'd go that far. I mean, I understood, I understood how she reached her conclusion.
Yeah.
But, and I also did cite in my, in my letter, some other examples in your own bylaw that are setbacks that are slightly different from front, rear, and side yard. So, for example, you have in Section 70, 17431 footnote 19, so three footnotes later, you have a requirement that lessens the yard setback requirements for building projections like chimneys, houses, overhangs, open decks. Another example is 17431 footnote 14, which requires certain natural wooded areas on lots located within 75 feet of like 28 and 151 in Great Neck South. So, in other words, there are other examples of increased area requirements that don't necessarily say area. They, an increased wooded area, an area that excludes wetlands, they all have the functional effect of making the property owner have more actual ownership of land in order to get a permit. And I think that they're called the increased area requirements.
Okay, anything else?
No, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'd like, at this point, go to letters. And, let's see, Farley, would you like to read?
I think I've got most of it. We have different areas in which this correspondence. We have communication from Dave Morris to the board. We have the Board of Health, we have Conservation, and we have the Butters who have sent correspondence. And let me go to Dave's first.
Sure, you can read whatever, what you choose to read, as long as you read them all.
It just seemed to be the easiest way to do it.
Yep.
All right, there's a communication dated August 8, 2025, to the Zoning Board of Appeals from David Morris, building commissioner, with a number of attachments. I'm not gonna read any of the attachments, but I'll read the enclosing letter. So, we have a notification of those. I would like the board to bring this application with ever-changing narrations and arguments to a conclusion. Here are some of the facts. The current status of the lot is unbuildable. Jacques Moran, the 291 Monomuscoy Realty Trust, took ownership for $30,000 on February 28, 2017. Jacques Moran also took ownership of 11 Hamblin Road directly across the street for $559,000 on February 28, 2017. 11 Hamblin was granted a special permit and a finding from the ZBA in 2018, V-201816 and 201815. A building permit was issued on November 21, 2018 for 3,114 square foot, four-bedroom home. Final inspection approved with condition of signed non-conversion agreement on March 6, 2023. Temporary CO issued on May 25, 2025. Permanent CO issued on July 13, 2025. Jacques Moran refused to sign non-conversion agreement. 291 Monomuscoy has two separate ZBA applications, an appeal and variance request to build a plus or minus 2,700 square foot, four-bedroom home. Lot is currently in violation of 174-25G13 and 174-25H8, 174-25H10, and 174-25I2. Vacant lot on Carriage Road is in violation of 174-25G13 and 174-25H10, second offense and subject to fines. The land is owned and developed by Jacques Moran, Aquway Highlands LLC. Applicant has stated to me that he and his wife have gone through substantial hardship obtaining a permit for this lot for more than three years. Applicant has expressed that he is entitled to a constructive approval because of three-year time period. August 5, 2025, Jacques Moran was cited for an open trench unattended, and the intention was to leave it open overnight. To conclude these petitions, I would like to recommend the board deny both of these with prejudice and suggest an application for a special permit under 17425H7 as a more appropriate course of action. There are a number of attachments that are attached to that letter, which I don't need to read or put into the record, they are part of the record. We also have Conservation Commission for 291 Monomuscoy Road. Resource area buffer zone to Salt Marsh and LSCSF. NOI application received, approval with a four-to-one vote from commissioners due to IA septic installation, flood compliant foundation, mitigation planting plan, and drywell installation. Conditions for approval are gravel installed under decks, walkway changed from impervious to pervious material, design slash specs on drywells, six red cedar trees added to overall mitigation planting plan, and three-year mitigation and monitoring contract with a qualified professional. Relative to the Board of Health, septic plan must be submitted or reviewed to Health Department. I believe, other than the letters from the Butters, that is all the information I have.
Okay. Is that correct, Marion?
Did you read Board of Health?
No, I did, no, I did. Yeah. All right, so, we have to go to the Butters' letters.
Yeah, we'll go to the Butters. I think that you should read that into the record. I'm not sure that these are in any particular order, but I'll read what I have and hope that I have them all. That should be read in.
Yes, no question, any...
I can...
Do you have these?
Tom, play anyone?
Notice the violation. They're dated August 8. Yeah, they're all part of what's in Dave's report.
Oh, I see, they're part of what's in Dave's report.
They're all bonded. Should they be read into the record, though?
I think, I think we're gonna have to read some more into the record of Dave's letter, but, so, where are you at now? You're at...
Why don't I, why don't I get to the Butters?
Okay. With the Butters, we'll go back to Dave's letter.
Okay. And then I'll get back to Dave's letter. All right, I have August 6, 2025, I have a letter from Richard E. Moore, 21 Hamblin Road, Mashpee, to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Dear Chairman Bonvy and board members, my family and I are the director Butters of 291 Monomuscoy Road at 14 Hamblin Road and 21 Hamblin Road. We were notified by mail of the appeal of a determination by the building inspector of 291 Monomuscoy Road. We completely support the building inspector's determination and findings as stated in the June 9, 2025, letter to Chairman Bonvy. This proposal to build a large structure on a small irregular-shaped lot would be detrimental to the neighborhood. We agree that a seven-foot and 12-foot setback from the roads is not safe. Monomuscoy Road being the main road on the island has seen a substantial increase in traffic volume over the past years. This lot is at the merge between Hamblin Road, Monomuscoy Road, and Great River Road. Proposed development is across from town access to water and shellfish areas at 7 Hamblin Road, adding to the congested area. There would be site obstruction if a structure were constructed there, creating additional safety concerns. We question why the south side of proposed house on submitted plans is angled... the south side of proposed house on submitted plans is angled away from the rest of the structure and shows a seven-foot setback from a Butters at fourteen Hamblen Road. It appears that structure foundation footprint is shoehorned in to take advantage of any possible variance. Why are the Butters being encroached on and penalized instead of the standard fifteen-foot setback being applied? This lot, fourteen Hamblen Road, has been owned by our family since nineteen forty-five. The applicant is now asking for variance relief from the Abutter for a project that we believe should not be allowed. Hamblen Pond is a designated area of critical concern, and any development in the area influences it even if it is not directly on the waterfront. We believe that any zoning bylaws pertaining to structural lot coverage and setback to wetlands should be considered and strictly enforced. We find it interesting that the applicant's narrative on the appeal letter seems to be challenging the Town of Mashpee bylaws as if they were in a court of law. The bylaws are written as such to protect the Town of Mashpee and its residents and other guide for the Building Inspector and Zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you very much for allowing us to comment and your consideration of our concerns. Sincerely, Richard Moore, Fifty-One Cliff Drive.
Do you want to keep reading, Charlie? You want to divvy them up and wants Board members to help you out a little bit?
Why don't I read one?
Yeah, you go ahead. Sure.
This one is from Clifford Sands. This one is from Clifford Sands. It's dated Wednesday, eight thirteen twenty-five at eleven thirty-five AM. Mr. Mary Ann Romero. I'm opposed to the building of such a large house on a small piece of land. The owner came to my house last night and tried to mislead me by telling me he was building a small, little house for my daughter. His house is neither small or little. It is much too big for that parcel of land. I'm not opposed to someone building an appropriately-sized house on that lot, but the drawings that the owner proposed are absurd. I think that the house is twice the size it should be for that lot. Please do not allow that monstrosity to be built. Thank you. Clifford Sands, nineteen Great River Road.
Who wants to read the next?
I got the next one.
Let's just make sure we get them all.
Judy Peoples, from Judy Peoples, eight twelve twenty-two five at eight twenty PM. I'm assuming it was an email. The Town of Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals, Ron Bonvy, Chairman. Dear Board Members and Board Chairman, I am writing in opposition to the requested variance for two ninety-one Monomoskoye Road, Mashpee, Mass. The proposed building would cause overcrowding on the property, roadway, and adjacent homes in the neighborhood. The home in vehicle congestion would be detrimental to our peaceful community. We are located at Monomoskoye Road and oppose the variance request. It is in our hope that maintaining residential limitations will enhance the beauty and quality of our homes near this location. Thank you for considering the request. Their location, I'm sorry, was two ninety-one Monomoskoye Road, is her residence.
Right. Who wants to read the next one?
Michael Prosek.
You can read the next one after that, Ron.
Eight thirteen, two thousand twenty-five at nine twenty, nine twenty eight AM. Mary Ann Romano. I'm writing in opposition to the proposed construction of what appears to be a very large house in a very small lot located at two ninety-one Monomoskoye Road. The application seeks waivers to place the house only seven point five feet from the busy Monomoskoye Road, which will not be out of character, which will be out of character with the other property on the island, but also a potential safety issue with the high volume and speed of traffic. The variances being requested deviate significantly from the building code and lot coverage that others have complied with, are contrary to the tree regulation recently adopted by the town. Trees already have already been removed from this property. Proposed five hundred foot square foot naturally vegetated area has already been mostly cleared. I believe this proposal is definitely out of character with the neighborhood. Thank you. Mike Prosek, twelve Green River Road.
Cass, would you like to read the next one?
Carol Sherman to Mary Ann Romero. I'm writing in opposition of two ninety-one Monomoskoye Road. Last night, I received a letter in my door stating with pictures of what Mr. Moran has proposed for this lot. If it wasn't for his pictures, my neighbors and myself would have never have known what he is, was proposing as a small cottage for his daughter. Thank you, Moran, for the pictures. Putting this on, that small lot is detrimental to our neighborhood, and too close to the street, too close to the street is changing the look of our neighborhood. Maybe you should go back to the drawing board and look at maybe those tiny houses for a tiny, tiny lot. Carol Sherman, twenty-two Green River Road.
All right, I got the next one. It's from Richard, the lot guy, I would guess, and it says, I'm writing in opposition to the proposed construction of a home on two ninety-one Monomoskoye Road. I have serious concerns of placing a home seven and a half feet from Monomoskoye Road. I'm under the impression that it is going to be a small, excuse me, I was under the impression that it was going to be a small home on this small lot. The plans now show a large four-bedroom home on a very small lot, very close to the street. As I stated above, I am opposed to this construction. I live at two seventy-eight Monomoskoye Road. Thank you.
I believe there's others, correct?
One more. No, there's one, one more letter from Mr. Morris that was not referred to in the original thing that I read.
Correct me wrong, there is another letter from an Abutter. Yeah, let's finish the Butter letters, then we'll go back to the Morris letters. Scott, you want to read one of them?
Unless, this one, I don't know. I have one from, did we do Clifford Sands?
Yes.
Okay. And then I have one, I don't know, two of them.
Cindy Jones?
Cindy Jones is one.
Cindy Jones.
Cindy Jones is the one I have.
Okay. I guess for some reason I had two. All right. From Cynthia Jones, and she's located twenty-eight Great River Road. Dear Sirs, I am, I am a resident on Monomoskoye Road owning land that is diagonally across the street from the construction that Mr. Moran has proposed. This property is now a strip of land that is across the street from Mr. Moran's house, a house that exceeds the height limit on the island. He is now appealing against the town's ruling to build on a lot that would be proposed cottage six feet from the edge of the road. Monomoskoye already has suffered and continues to suffer every storm by two families, appealing the rights to build on unsuitable, unbuildable lots, two sixty-five Monomoskoye Road and two sixty-six Monomoskoye Road. This appeal has caused residents on Monomoskoye Island much concern during inclement weather. This area of the road becomes completely immersed underwater. Driving through the deep water and ice in the winter is very disheartening for us residents. Besides the aesthetics and the closeness to the road, Mr. Moran's construction appeal, there is a deep concern among us that we will be facing the results of another hardship. Monomoskoye residents suffer, suffer from the lack of drainage during storms. This hardship cannot be reconciled by the town. We are residents, we are residents cannot have another hardship. Mr. Moran's house goes against the land allowance. We are, we as residents do not want another irrevocable drainage problem. Rules apply to all of us. I oppose Mr. Moran's appeal. Concerned resident of Monomoskoye Road, Cynthia Jones.
Do we have any others left, Mary Ann?
There's one, James Perry. It's in the packet that David wrote.
So that's in a Butter letter?
Is that the Building Inspector?
Or is that building?
Uh, let's see. It says, three seventy-three Ashes Path East, and it talks about Mr. Moran.
Is that in a Butter letter, Mary Ann, or is that in David's?
It's in David's.
All right. So Charlie, why don't you go through David's packet and read, read the various aspects of that?
There's one additional letter that Dave wrote that's not referred to in his compilation that he sent to us. And that's a memo to Ron Bonvy from Dave Morris dated June ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, relative to two ninety-one Monomoskoye Road. Dear Chairman Bonvy, as with the proposal of twenty-four Secant Point Road, I am of the strong opinion that the proposal at the above address requires a variance of structure lot coverage and setback to wetlands. Lacking a variance will render this lot unbuildable, and the only other principal use will require a special permit under the provisions of one seventy-four twenty-five H seven. Although it is a fairly common, although it is fairly common for property owners in Monomoskoye to own a lot across the street from their dwelling, a one or two-car garage or greenhouse may not be allowed by special permit because all applicable setbacks cannot be met. I am of the opinion that if a greenhouse of any size is unable to be erected on this lot, there is no way a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling belongs on this property. A seven-foot and twelve-foot setback from the road is not safe and may cause a slight obstruction. This lot is currently assessed at twenty-one thousand dollars. Sincerely, David Morris.
Are there other aspects of David's?
No, everything, you know, everything else that I read in that original notation by Dave made reference to material that's attached to that letter. We can incorporate all of that.
David, is it important to you if any of these other things get part of the record as far as being read into the record?
No, no.
Okay, you're okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay.
All right. Is the board okay with that? Because he could read several other documents that David makes reference to.
The only point I would like to point out is, you know, the current status of the lot is unbuildable. And I, I think they, the application should be for a special permit under one seventy-four twenty-five H seven for, for a garage, as simple as that. Because they bought the land knowing that it was deemed unbuildable.
Well, why don't we go Board Questions, and I'll go back to you with other inputs. So Board Questions.
All right, let me start. What's the structure coverage?
Lot coverage.
Structure coverage.
If you were to build this house, what would be the structure coverage? How much percentage of the lot would the structure cover?
So I have two, two responses to that. So under the appeal to the Building Commissioner, the only question is whether the lot is protected from this particular section. So we don't have the lot coverage requirements. I would suggest to you that it's going to be one hundred percent because the way that the board is interpreting this is that the entire lot, it has zero area for zoning purposes. It's entirely land subject to coastal storm flowage. So right now, there's zero lot area, and the way the board is interpreting this requirement, since that Land Corps case came down, is a hundred percent, a hundred percent. So it's going to be a hundred percent.
We've always done it two ways. Why don't you go into that?
So here's my question. Here's where he's going with this.
Yep.
Let's just say this board has asked the following question of all applicants. What percentage of the lot does the structure cover if you were allowed to build it?
Is it point two? I'm being told by my client it's point two-six. So it's twenty-six percent.
Twenty-six percent.
Twenty-six.
So in that zone, we're twenty percent?
Twenty-five.
So, so, I get you. So twenty-five is, is?
Because of the size of the lot.
We're at twenty-six.
Not because of the area.
Right. So I have a question. I have lived my life based on forty-eight Section Six, right? Whether it be zoning, whether it be subdivisions, whether you name it, right? Because being a developer, that's, that's the place I live in.
Right.
In my, in my life, I've tried to get protection from various aspects of setbacks, from wetlands, various aspects of that. And every single time I go for that protection, I get beat down because it wasn't the intent, and it wasn't specifically stated in forty-eight Section Six, and I've lost my share of land over that statement. So I can tell you, it is my opinion, there's only one member of this board, that I concur with Town Council. And I'm not seeing what you're, what you're, what you're saying. I'm really not.
I certainly agree with you, Mr. Bonvy, that there are many, many, many zoning requirements that are not protected by forty-eight. Forty-eight Six goes back quite a ways, I think to nineteen seventy-five. And so there's been all kinds of changes to zoning as, as things become more and more complex, like for example, floor, floor area ratios that you see, I don't think Mashpee has those, but Barnstable does, clearly not protected. The argument I'm making is, is that the effect of the two provisions at issue are to increase the amount of land area that a property owner has to have.
I, I get your argument. I understand where you're coming from. And frankly, if this board were to deny your appeal, and you were to appeal it to the courts, and a judge were to remand back, seeing it in your favor, I'd be open-minded that because there's, there's a lot of things out there I'd be more interested in purchasing than I had been in the past. Because I think there's a lot of opportunity in the world in Massachusetts based on that theory.
Right.
I, I don't see a judge doing that. If this board were to deny, I can't make them, I'm only one member. But I'm just saying, I don't see a judge seeing what you're seeing. I really don't, I mean, I just, over the years of running this so many times, and I think it's on point. I really do. I think it's.
I definitely see, I understand.
I think it's right there.
I, I understand your point, and I, and I read your town attorney's opinion. And, you know, different attorneys do have different opinions, and.
Well, that's why we have attorneys, right?
Right. And she used the words most likely and no case law. And so, you know, I, I think that the argument that I'm making is rational. It's based upon the effect of this, of this.
I think it's an argument that's been made several times. I don't, I guess it's clear that it hasn't been litigated, because it would have been case law.
That's correct. And I, I think both the town attorney and I agree that there's limited case law. But I have shown you this, I've cited the Taunton case.
I, I get that. But for me, as, as one member of this board, we've got Town Council that's made a quasi, well, has made a decision, right? That's the only leg that we can, that I can stand on, that I concur with because I've had a deal, I've dealt with it the same way the Town Council's decision has been made or voiced. I don't know where else to go with it but there. In my rec, in my stance is, is I don't think you have protection on forty-eight Section Six. I really don't see it. I mean, and, and again, if it gets to that point, I'd love to see, you know, that outcome. But I just don't see a judge doing that.
Two requests. Can, can, why, can we hear from other members of the board?
Oh, certainly. I'm just giving, I'm just speaking, and I'm going to ask the rest of the board for their, you know, for whatever they want to say. I'm just telling you that in years since forty-eight Section Six, we've all been dealing with it, and it's been a long time. I mean, a lot of us live by that, and I do. And I got to tell you, that's been brought up many a time on different avenues. And now we have Town Council opining to the same decision.
That's true.
I mean, Town Council's making the, basically the same decision that I'm of the opinion.
So two, two other things. My client reminded me of something. So before I got involved, I'm the second attorney. You didn't see the first one because he retired before we got to this stage in the process. But my client got an opinion from Mark Bobrowski, if that means anything. But he wrote the book on, the handbook.
He's my, one of my attorneys.
Okay, so.
So I would.
Yeah, so he wrote the book on, it's called The Handbook of Massachusetts Land Use Law and Planning.
He's got it in his pocket.
He's got the book.
I've got the eighth edition, the seventh edition, the sixth edition. Yeah, that's the latest one.
That's the book. He gave it to me.
Yeah.
Free.
So he, he actually wrote.
Free, right. Did he sign it?
So, so he wrote an opinion on it, and I, I guess his opinion carries more weight than mine, because he wrote a book and I didn't. I'm, I'm opining this way, and I've pointed out that your attorney said most likely and didn't, said there's no case law. So maybe it would be worth postponing a decision on this and consulting with your town attorney one more time.
I would leave that up to the rest of the board. I'm, for me, I'm, I'm far enough on this thing, and I'm, and my, my, my knowledge and background of this thing says to me, as one member only.
Yeah. No, and again, I.
That I disagree with your theory.
Right. And I don't want to be repetitive, but I certainly agree with the premise that you're stating, that there are many, many zoning requirements that are not protected. There clearly are. I'm making the argument, I know you disagree with me, I think that this comes under the protection.
Totally understand. And your argument has been made by other attorneys that I've asked, that, that I could have made a couple of dollars on, on a piece of property.
On this provision?
No, no, on something very similar.
Okay.
And I, and I couldn't get their opinion to say, I think you're right, Ron. It's always been, no, you're wrong, Ron. And so they've disagreed theoretically with your theory. I, I just can't go there. I just, you know, and like I said, I live by it. It's the thing that I quite commonly deal with.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't want to go into depth, but I could spend hours.
I, I, I know, Mr. Bonvy, I know what you mean.
Yeah. Let's, let, let, let me ask the board. So is, is the board clear as to where the applicant or where Mr. Wall's opinion is and what it is and how it is?
Very clear.
So why don't I say this? I'll go even with the associates. So Cass, what do you think?
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
The order in which these appear tonight is of some importance, is it not?
It is.
All right. So the first, the first issue that we have to confront is, we have to determine whether or not you have established a. have established a factual or legal basis to support the appeal of the building official's determination regarding the June 9, 2025, letter.
Correct.
All right.
And if you do, then he doesn't have to go to this. If we saw it in his favor and not David's favor, we go, we do not have to go to the second applicant. I would assume he would withdraw.
Right.
That was my question.
Right.
He would withdraw because he wouldn't need it. But if the first one is not found in his favor, then he wants to be heard for variance.
That's all I needed to know.
Yeah, right.
Am I correct in that statement?
Yes.
Yes, that's what, yes. So, what are your thoughts? Cass, what are your thoughts on this?
Well, I just look at town council and the building commissioner's decisions. It's enough for me.
Okay. Charlie?
My thought is that the petitioner has not established a factual or legal basis.
Okay.
George? My question is, so was there ever building, issued for this plot?
No.
No.
Why is there construction equipment there?
Why is it cleared?
Why is it cleared?
I think it's partially cleared because it was cleared in connection with the construction of the house next door.
What? How can you clear a lot?
I don't understand that.
I thought there was a tree bylaw.
There's a paper...
The thing is such a major...
Do you want to answer that question?
That makes no sense to me.
Mr. Moran will answer the question.
When we purchased that, there were already a number of trees down when we were building the home across the street and needed area for putting the material. Drew had said to stage on that lot, there were perhaps maybe three more trees taken down. But if you look at the aerials, you'll see that there was a clearing before we purchased the lot. And that was before the tree bylaw as well.
Okay.
Dave, do you agree with that? That the lot was cleared before illegally?
It's not fully cleared.
Not really. No, they're using it for parking, they're using it for scraping the lot down for a driveway. It should be brought back to, as I said in one of the notices, that it should be brought back to its natural state.
I can't imagine in a residential neighborhood like that, conservation or the building permit is okay with just parking equipment there indefinitely.
Same, man.
It's not an indefinite. The two pieces were there because we were in the process of building a pool across the street.
And boats and trailers there.
Those are gone.
The picture I saw had...
There's a jet ski trailer there.
You can't be storing vehicles on that.
John tells me there's a, he was down there today.
I was down there today. There was stuff all over that lot.
Sure.
Well, let's keep going. Let's keep going with the appeal. So, all right.
I agree with Charlie.
George, what do you think?
I mean, I think there's some work to be done before anything is done here or approved.
Okay, Scott.
I've been on this board for quite a while now, and as a home builder for almost 40 years, I've never seen anything remotely close to this get approved as a building lot.
John?
I'm with Charlie.
Charlie?
I'm with...
No comment. Scott?
No comment?
No comment.
All right. Sharon?
I was down there. There's equipment down there. There's boats down there. There's all sorts of stuff. And when I visualize that lot, I don't even understand how you can get a house on the lot. And I don't agree with your argument either.
Okay. I clearly have my issues, my are based on 48 Section 6. So, David, you have any other input?
I believe them all suck.
Anyone in the audience have any input or any questions? Seeing none, go back to the board again. All right, we're going to have a vote.
Well, I have a request, Mr. Chairman.
Sterling?
I'd like to request a continuance for two reasons. One is, it's not up to me, but I would ask the board to submit this to town council to get a further opinion. And the second thing that I want to say is that I'm going to follow my own sword. I was in court on Monday all day, Mr. Morris was there. I have not seen Mr. Morris's most recent letter, and if I heard it being read, I was trying to process all that information. There was a suggestion to file for a special permit under 174-25H7. So, I'd like to ask for a continuance, excuse my voice, to consider Mr. Morris's letter to see if there might be a different path forward before you make a decision on this. Because if you do make a decision, we have the 20-day appeal period, and we'll have to pursue that.
Ron, why don't we, why don't we pull the bullet?
Well, one second. I mean, I see David, it's...
I mean, we're just pushing this down the road. I want this to be done tonight. It's what is in my letter. This is appeal for my decision to build a home. It's not appeal to build a garage. So, why would we change that? I want this basically denied with prejudice. As I said, I want both of these applications denied with prejudice.
My only concern is, David, if the applicant...
And the other reason is because it, what's concerning to me is that he threatens a constructive approval. And we punt this down the road, it just keeps on going further and further.
My only concern is if the applicant is asking for an extension, I don't know the rights of the board to deny an extension. I'd be a little, but anyway, I get your point.
Because he's asking for a different, an extension to change the whole application. He wants to change it to 175 whatever H, whatever it was. He wants to change the application. If he should do that, it's not extending this.
He said, because he's in court, he's asking for an extension because he hadn't had a chance to review the document. I don't know.
That's all. But if I, I didn't know what 174-25H was.
We've already talked about it. We've said that before. You keep on changing how this thing's rolling. It's going a different way.
My opinion, rather than an extension, you should...
The only thing that's... But they should withdraw and refile.
Right. I agree.
We can't do that, with all due respect, because when Mr. Morris issued a decision, I had to file an appeal or live with the decision.
Be timed by the extension.
Now, we're going to vote on this.
But when were you in court? This is dated August 8.
I was in court on Monday, the 11th, and I was getting...
I was there. I can vouch for it.
I was getting ready.
No, I know, but...
I'm not making excuses.
This was starting on the 8th.
I was getting ready for my trial on Friday, the 8th.
All right, look at this, this is a quandary.
I didn't read the letter, but it's the board's prerogative. I'm asking that you submit it to town council if the board doesn't want to do that.
Well, I don't see us submitting to town council. I'm not willing to do that. But I'm a little concerned about you asking for an extension and where we're going with that.
Well, I think that Mr. Morris is, I didn't know what 174-25, but when he said garage, it refreshed my memory, so I know what he's talking about now.
So, if you now know what he's talking about, is that something acceptable? All right. So, it doesn't make sense to make an, ask for an extension at this point, right?
Right.
Okay. So, that being said, the board's going to vote on your application.
Okay.
All right. So, can I get a motion in reference to the appeal? Now, the way we're going to do this is going to be...
We have a closed public comment?
He already asked.
I went to the public.
But we'd have a closed public comment.
No, no, you're right. But I'm just, yes. I went to the public, right? Yes. All right. So, I'm going to close a public hearing. Go ahead, someone make a motion.
I'll make that motion to close the public here.
Have a second.
Second.
All is in favor. So, now, let's have a conversation about how this is going to go. If we've, it's all going to be positive. So, we're going to vote, it's going to be, make the motion in a positive, in that you're going to approve the appeal.
Me, approve? Let's see, I, we do it, board has to determine if the petitioner has established a factual or legal basis to support the appeal.
So, you're going to say that the appellate has, has made the basis or has...
Has not.
And no, has, and then we're going to say no, if you're going to do on the, on the affirmative. Or you could say that he hasn't, and we could say yes.
Well, that's where it's going.
So, if you're voting for Brian, it's a yes if you're voting...
No, but let's see how he wants to do it. But how do you want to make the motion, Charlie?
Get it as simple as possible.
Brian, you listen to this, too, just to make sure that we're all on the same...
Sorry, yeah, I was just talking.
All right. We have to determine if the petitioner has or has not established a factual or legal basis. So, the question is, has the petitioner established a factual or legal basis to support the appeal of the building official's determination regarding the letter dated June 9, 2025? If the answer to that is no, that ends it.
Right. So, why don't you make a motion saying that he has not, and then we would be affirmative to that, right? And that would not, that would say that he hasn't, he hasn't overturned it, correct? How would, it's up to you. You're making a motion. I don't really care.
I think I'd rather do it the way I started off.
All right. So, I think, I know, I know where the board's going, and I think it's in everybody's interest that it...
To make sure that we're correct.
Right. So, if I...
Question before the board.
But I don't think it's a question, with all due respect.
No.
What I would suggest is something to say, something along the following lines. I move that the board determine that the applicant has not established a factual or legal basis to support the building commission.
That's the opposite of what he was saying.
Yes. Or you can make it in the positive. You can say, "I move to make a determination that the applicant has established..."
Right. And the board wants to do it that way. So, make it in the positive. Determine that the board has, or the decision, the applicant has made the appropriate argument. What was the language you just said?
We're going to wind up in the negative.
Make a determination that...
Determination.
He's got it. He knows it's in the positive. He's got this.
And do it in the positive, Charlie.
Do it in the positive.
If the applicant has made...
All right. The question before the board, the motion, let me get the paraphernalia out there first, all right? 291 Monmouth Goy Road. Owner, Jacques Moran, trustee, 291 Monmouth Goy Realty Trust, is appealing the building commissioner's determination under Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 8 and 15. Applicant is aggrieved by the building commissioner's letter dated June 9, 2025, that the proposal to develop a single-family dwelling on property at 291 Monmouth Goy Road requires variances from structure lot coverage, Section 174-13, footnote 16, and setback to Wetlands 174-33, located in an R3 zoning district, map 120, parcel 94, Mashpee, Mass, with the following The way I intend to put it...
There's no condition.
The question is, has the petitioner established a factual or legal basis to support the appeal of the building official's determination regarding the letter dated June 9, 2025? If the answer to that is no, then...
So, what's the motion? Is the, so...
That's the motion.
That's the motion.
So, your motion is actually that they have not found that, right? They have not proven that, that. Is that your motion?
No, 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 no.
We have to make, we have to make that determination. So, the question before the board is, has the petitioner established a factual or legal basis to support the appeal?
No. The way you worded, we've been doing this for 20 years. You worded in the positive that he's made a factual... Has he made determination? And we vote no or yes.
So, the applicant, the applicant has made or has made a...
What is determined if, has or has not established a factual or legal basis to support the appeal on the building officials?
Yeah, I like "established," it makes sense. That makes no sense. Why is this getting so complicated?
It's way too complicated.
It shouldn't be that complicated.
Right, here it is.
Oh, it shouldn't be.
Here it is, right here. The board has, the board has determined that the petitioner has, has, has established a factual and legal basis to support the appeal of the building official's determination regarding the letter dated June 9, 2025. Correct. We can vote no on that, which means the applicant has not found the basis.
You set a basis for our vote.
All right. So, here's the motion. It's very, the board has determined, the petitioner has, has established a factual and legal basis to support the appeal of the builders, building official's determination regarding the letter dated June 9, 2025. Right?
That's what we...
Has. So, if you vote in favor of this, you're in favor of the appeal. If you vote against it, you're in agreement with the appeal. Meaning, you vote against it, you're not in agreement with the applicant.
That's you.
Okay. So, is that your motion?
That's the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, second. All right.
What will call?
No.
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 No?
No.
I hope that was clear.
It was clear. And just to save, just to save some time, I want to say two things. First of all, thank you. I appreciate you listening and hearing my argument. Second thing is, is based on the outcome of that hearing, my client now wants to consider what his options are potentially appealing. So, I'd like to, the next matter on the agenda, I would like to ask for a continuance of that so that we can have some time to think about that.
I would have no problem with that. So, when are you going to continue until, sir?
Could we have a two-week time? We talked about this already, it's not sufficient. So, maybe three or four weeks to a hearing.
Except Mary Ann. That's the October. What's, what's the date, Mary Ann?
October 8.
Yes, the applicant requests a continuance to October 8.
Do I have a motion to accept the applicant's request to extend him to October 8? Do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor. I have a extension to October 8, sir. Thank you very much.
I see everyone.
That was painful. We're kinda going across.
That's my mic, I don't know what's. Gotta get this fixed before.
What is that?
I don't know. Those mics?
Who's microphone?
My mic.
Hey, seeing that mic. See if it's.
It's that one.
Can you shut them off?
Yeah. I know, I wanna do it. Here comes the sound good.
IG, we need IG.
The second one.
He's going to hell in a hand though.
I understood what I was saying, but I guess I didn't.
Oh, you did. Yeah, you're right.
It was just the opposite.
Tell you, mine was acting up earlier.
Well, you were doing it. Yeah, well then.
Oh, it is you.
Oh, it's you.
Ah, good work.
It was you.
It was acting up earlier.
Can we shut that one off and you'll share someone else's?
Use this one.
Yeah, all right, we're fine.
It doesn't shut up.
They don't shut off anymore.
Can you unplug it?
Yeah.
Shut down the chairman, please.
Fine, hey, after the last hearing, I'm fine. Whoa. All right, thank you very much.
You got a working mic now?
Well, yes and no's, that's all right. It's still doing it.
I thought I didn't.
Yep. That's, that's good enough. That's fine, that's fine.
Now I don't have to talk.
It's still doing it, though.
Well, it needs to be shut off. It's gone now.
That was bad.
Better.
We have one more, let's get through it.
All right, we have one more, I think. One more, so.
Your sign.
Oh, sorry. Oh, Jesus. I fixed it, watch.
You didn't fix it, broke it.
Come on, Ron.
Oh, well, do it, you want it?
Check denied.
I don't think that's how you fix it, Ron.
Oh, maybe that did it.
I'm telling you.
I'm not going with that.
I just fixed it.
No, I think he tried it off.
I think it's done.
All right, let's just go with that. Nope.
Okay.
All right, kick it again. How you fix your butt, too?
How about underneath?
You must have kicked the wires underneath.
I must have?
It was your fault.
The only, all right, we have. These poor people have waited for this whole thing. They have to wait for all this. Now they're gonna wait for this.
All right, don't kick it.
I won't.
Don't touch it.
And I won't touch the desk. All right. Who would like to read?
Hold on.
We're gonna finish on it.
Let's start reading.
Make sure you, oh, this is the extension, right?
Exactly.
We don't have to sign anything for the.
You don't have to sign the other one?
No.
No, that was extended, so there was.
No, the first one.
The first one.
First one, we gotta sign the denial.
Do we have to sign the no's? We have to.
No, the first one was a decision of David being overturned, and we didn't overturn it. So you probably should have a document not overturning it.
Agreed.
Denied that.
That's right. He's a baby saying it's denied.
I gotta sign.
Oh.
Yeah, right.
That's what I was saying, check the right box.
That one.
We gotta deny it. No big deal.
We're all gonna get through this. Sorry, it's our first time.
Yeah.
Sign and deny.
I think it's the right one.
Usually we're very organized.
Is this the one for?
I thought it was simple, still, I started to think about it, then all of a sudden it became far too complicated to follow what was going on.
It really, yeah, it got way more complicated than it needs to be. But we get through it. It's okay. It's, but I know.
The amount of money we get paid, it's not a big.
I know where I'm going, because if it's not worded right, you could vote the wrong way.
Yeah, I know that.
Everybody's just trying to make.
That's the important thing right there. That has to be done correctly.
Right.
Ron, we could have carried that on for another half an hour and not gotten any place, you know?
That's true. I could have carried on the 48th Section 6 for about two days.
I could see you doing that, too.
Really?
So you no longer mic'd up?
I have no idea. I'm gonna consider that I am, so we'll see what happens.
Georgie.
All right, so who would like to read 868 Falmouth Road into the record?
Will you trust me?
Yeah, I trust you, Charlie.
All right, here we go. 868 Falmouth Road, petitioner Nexgrid Tongue Oil LLC requests a modification to the existing special permit SP 9253 and SP 8410042 to allow for installation of five large-scale ground-mounted solar panels akin to carport structures at the rear of the existing storage facility. This modification also includes two waiver requests presently pending before the planning board. First waiver request for setback relief from Section 17445, C to C, 100 feet to approximately 63 feet, setback for solar PV carport structures. Second waiver request for maximum structure height, Section 17445.7, C2G, allowance from 15 feet up to 23 feet of clearance for RV and boat storage on property located in an I-1 zoning district. Map 88, parcel 2A, Mashpee, Mass. Planning Board will, excuse me, vote on waivers only at its meeting on August 6, 2025, in the Aquit Room of Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. And welcomes public comment at this meeting. ZBA will incorporate Planning Board waiver note vote into its final modification decision.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. My name is Mike Patterson. I'm from Nexgrid. With me is Melinda Costello from Weston and Sampson. As was Red, we're here requesting our minor modification to the existing special permit at 868 Falmouth Road for our development and construction of a rooftop and carport-mounted solar array. It includes five carports, and it also has rooftop mounted and a battery system. As they mentioned, we are, we requested two waivers, one for the 100-foot setback to the R1 District of the South, as well as the 15-foot structure height, which we were approved on during the planning board hearing last Wednesday on August 6. Are there any questions I can?
So you don't, are you asking for anything from this board in reference to those waivers?
No, not, not in reference to those waivers.
Because it's my opinion, the planning board does have a right to issue those waivers.
Yes, and they approved last week.
It's clear, it's right in the actual zone.
And they did.
So you're not asking for anything on that?
No.
No, it's just a minor modification to the existing special permit for the property.
And I've asked Mary Ann to have both those special permits, so we can read to see if there's anything in there.
They're in.
Yeah, they're in our packet. We should probably take a look at those.
And if they're in the book that was submitted by.
Oh, they're in the book.
They're in the big book.
All right, we should take a look at that. So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to both of you. Are you done with your presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So, that being said, Charlie, would you like to read letters into the record, please?
We have, I guess principally the conservation, not in wetlands, and Board of Health, no comment. We have a letter dated August 4, 2025, from Pesci Engineering and Associates. That is, two, three, I think, three and a half pages.
So that was the peer review?
Right.
And I think there were some replies in there from Weston and Sampson.
We just replied to his, his letter today.
So let me ask you a question. So you just replied, so you have not received from Mr. Pesci his thumbs up or thumbs down to your reply, I presume?
Not to my reply, correct.
Okay. So it seems to me that is an open letter, in that Mr. Pesci's peer review came a little bit late in the game, and they replied, and he has not replied to their reply. And his reply to their reply might be myriad of things, like, I need more information, like, I don't agree, whatever it may be. So that, that in itself is a question mark for the board. Does that make sense? All right, what other, what other things, I, should we read the peer review into the record? I don't know. It's up to you guys and ladies.
I don't, I don't think we should until they have received and have the ability to comment on it.
We did comment on that letter.
They've commented, they've done both.
Yes.
They've received and they've commented.
They commented, we don't know what Ed Pesci has to say about.
Right, that's.
Sorry to say it, but I think you should read it.
I think so, too. Has this been established that it's a minor modification?
I don't even think they're, you're not asking whether it's minor or major, you're just asking to modify, right?
Correct.
No, minor modification.
No, they're not asking whether it's minor or major.
They're asking for a minor modification.
The letter says it's minor modification.
Do we have your response?
Says, request a modification of existing special permit.
I just, I just electronically submitted it today.
I'm talking the book, right in first page of the book.
I'm just looking at the advertisement.
Right there.
The way it was advertised, it just says a modification.
That's the way it was advertised.
Yes.
Yeah, here's the cover sheet. Special permit, minor modification.
I get you, but you haven't.
Has it been established that it's minor? I mean, it's a pretty big project.
So, so we, we have previously, just to give you some background of where we've been up to this point, we went in front of both the design and plan review committees earlier in the spring and summer, and they both positively recommended the project to move forward. And it was during the, the second one, is that the design, or the plan review?
Design was first, I was on that one.
Okay, so the plan review with all the board, the, the town board members here, they recommended that we move forward with our application, because it's, it was a little bit tricky, because how the current bylaws read associated with solar and in the zoning district that we're in, there wasn't clear, a clear path forward on how we would get approval for the setbacks. So it was the recommendation of that board with support from the building commissioner that we go and submit in front of the planning board first for approvals of the waiver, so that a public notice could be sent out to a butters associated with that. And then, following that, approval for the project be as a minor modification to the existing special permit for the project. So, so we are just submitting this based on the recommendations that we received from both the town planner and the building commissioner.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a comment on that.
Sure.
I was on that design review, and the questions that I had about the setback to the residents that's on that property.
Yeah, we've, we have addressed that in.
So it wasn't a clear thumbs up.
From, from the plan, from the second committee.
From the design review, I'm talking.
The design review, but you issued comments, and all of your comments that were issued as part of that letter have since been incorporated into the plans that we're, we're submitting in front of you tonight.
So Jonathan, excuse me, one of the things you're concerned about, one of the things is a factual.
There's a residence there.
So is it minor or major, right? Because it becomes major, then it's, and I get, so.
The question is, has it been established?
So the question that one of the board members is asking is, it has not been established yet whether this is a minor or major modification. I understand, a minor modification is just what it says, right? It's minor, a major modification is advertised and da-da-da-da-da-da. It's a little bit different. Yes, exactly.
Can, can I ask for the building commissioner to give his opinion on that, because he was a part of the decision.
Be my guest.
They've, they've jumped through all the hoops, they have addressed a lot of these issues, they have sent out letters to all the butters. So I, I don't know if it's, does it have to be a major or a mod, do we have to decide on that? Or is it just a modification?
Well, we have, we have a member, maybe other members, that feel that, that decision has to be made, so.
Well, it's laid out in the book.
Yeah, I mean, the book states.
It's in the bylaw book.
I was looking at the advertisement, it doesn't say minor or major, but the book says minor.
It says minor right here, and it says, you know, there's a mention of an A and R. So, I mean, it's.
Well, but here's the question.
It's a very approvable project, and they have addressed all the issues that we've had, and they, and they bring it to this board. This, they went to the plan, planning board, and they, and they're at this board, this is kind of final.
So let me say this to you, Jonathan, which may help. The difference between minor and major is the major has to be advertised, has to be a public, yeah, exactly. I think they followed that under a major.
It's laid out right here.
Yeah, and I, I would think that if we looked at that.
We has, as if it was a major.
That's what I'm saying. I think it's advertised as if it's a major modification.
Because it didn't say minor.
Because it didn't say minor, and it's advertised as a public hearing. A minor wouldn't need an advertisement.
I'm fine with that part of it. I'd like to hear the engineers' comments.
I mean, that, that was a question, an open question I had.
Only us, yeah. Well, it would seem to me, one of the hangups we've got right this second, and I've gotta go audience, et cetera, is the fact that Mr. Pesci, our peer review, has given you comments, and you've commented on the comments, we don't know if he says thumbs up or thumbs down.
Yes.
So I don't think we can deal with it tonight, meaning close this thing out. I think we're gonna have to extend this, simply because we have to hear from our, our own engineer whether he's happy with your comments.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to go through what his comments were, and respectively, just show what our compliance was.
As one member, I'd rather see what he comes back with, then I can see his comments, your comments, and how he reacted to them, and I'll just read that.
Okay.
And then whatever, whatever questions I may have.
That makes all the.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we've gotta wait for him to get back to you before we can do anything. But I also think we should, any other issues we may have, we should bring up tonight, in fact, we have other issues.
I agree with you, because if we go through the whole thing tonight, we're gonna go through it again.
We're gonna just.
Same exact thing.
Yeah. So, but do we have as a board, do we have anything that we can think of tonight that we should ask the applicant? I was, one of the things, I had a little concern about this, decommissioning. Talk to me about decommissioning.
But that is being addressed by Ed.
Well, no. Ed already agreed that the plan is okay. So the decommission has been accepted.
Yeah.
And I'm sitting there saying, I'm questioning the decommission.
Okay.
Above and beyond Ed.
You can go ahead.
My decommission, go ahead.
So, yes, it was brought up during the planning board, and then there was a request to boost it by 25%. So that, the total amount.
So what's the total amount?
Do you want to just explain what the, what the decommissioning?
Sure. So you want to explain what the decommissioning is for?
Okay, I'm just trying to understand the total amount right now. Okay.
I think if that's Pesci's letter, it's 135964.
So that's the, that's the 20% increase, isn't it?
That is with the, that is with the 25%.
It was 108.
Right.
Correct.
So you're saying to me, when does the decommissioning take effect?
So how it works is, we put together a decommissioning bond prior to construction of the site.
Yeah.
Then, what it basically does, it just sits in bond for 20 years, and we pay for it annually. And it is a cost that, so let's say our company in 25 years disappears. It puts in an avenue so the town can have funds to have the system taken down and the site restored back to its original condition.
Totally understand, and I do bonding quite a bit. My concern is 20 years from now, $130,000 is gonna be about today's dollars?
Today's dollars, I think it was.
Five grand or something.
Well, that includes, that includes the.
It's insane. And what's that, what are those dollars gonna do?
So.
One of the things that I'm gonna bring up to you the next time you come back, just letting you know.
So the, the decommissioning estimate and plan that Nexgrid put together, the current, the current dollar value of what it was estimated is less than that 100. That, that's the future value in 25 years.
So you're saying the dollars that they do, that they figured today for decommission, if you were to decommission today, 20 years from now, dollars would be the $130,000 of 120%.
It has a 2% annual escalation over the life of 20 years.
That's a pretty inexpensive decommissioning there.
Is that a good number, 2%?
Yeah, it's, can you tell me what the decommission would be then today?
Question, right?
Yep.
This is the thing that I spent my efforts on when I was looking at the book, and I didn't look at minor, you know, I didn't look at that aspect, I should have.
Sorry, bear with me here.
And does, and just let me know what decommissioning entails. It just doesn't fit in my brain.
So, the today price for decommissioning a system would be $91,744.
So $91,000, 20 years from now is worth 100, because that wasn't increased by 20%, right?
That, so originally, it was, I believe, like $70,000.
So $70,000 over 20 years became 108.
Correct.
That's not 20%. I thought every seven years, a dollar doubled.
2%, he said, not 20.
No.
They said 2%.
No, so over 20 years, this is, as I understand, the 70-something thousand today, 20 years from now is worth 103.
Uh, yeah, something like 108. So then, we was requested.
That sounds right.
It's a 2% escalation, annual escalation.
It's inflation.
Basically, to account for inflation.
A 2%.
It's probably an interest-bearing account anyway.
Doesn't make sense to me.
I don't.
No, so over 20 years, this is as I understand, the 70-something thousand today, 20 years from now is worth 103.
Uh, yeah, something like 108. So then we was requested...
That doesn't sound right.
It's a 2% escalation, annual escalation.
It's inflation.
It's basically to account for inflation.
A 2%...
It's part of the interest-bearing account anyway.
Doesn't make sense to me.
I don't...
Because my 70,000, you're saying today, my, what I can buy today, because we're talking about buying power, because you've got to buy things to decommission, right? You have to buy labor, you have to buy materials, so whatever you buy today for 70-something thousand, you're saying 20 years from now, you're going to be able to buy it at 108,000.
That is with the...
Well, I'm hoping that's the way it is, because I love that.
That is with the 2% annual escalat, annual escalation.
Yeah, it just doesn't sound right.
So the way you do it, say it was a dollar. 2%, now it's a dollar two.
No, it's more than that.
The following year, you do 2% off the dollar two.
Yes, but what I'm saying is, if you look back 20 years ago, you're, what you buy today compared to what you bought 20 years ago for that dollar would be peanuts, from my mind. It just doesn't, it doesn't calculate in my mind. It, it, it's okay, it's all right with your mind in that, in that 87 or 85 becomes 107 over 20 years?
There's got to be a formula there to use.
Yeah, no, no, that's what I'm saying, when it, it starts out as a dollar.
I understand 2% increase.
Yeah, the 2% is on an increased amount, so it grows.
No, no, no.
I mean, if, so if 2% does not make you comfortable, does a 3% escalation make you comfortable?
I'm going to spend...
I wonder what the right answer is.
Put it this way, I'm just throwing something out there that when you come back, I'm going to do some work between now and the time you come back so that I can understand historically what 20 years ago my dollar was worth, because that's what we're talking about, inflation, et cetera. We're going to look at, I'm going to look at what my dollar's worth today compared to 20 years ago. That car I bought 20 years ago, what would I spend for it today? Because that's what you're talking about. Decommissioning is a, is a car, is a whatever, it's just a bunch of stuff. And I'm going to look at what I could have done 20 years ago for that stuff compared to today, and I'm saying it isn't 70-something to 100-something, it's more like 70 to 200, 300 grand. It's crazy, because that's, that's what I'm looking at. I just don't want the town 20 years from now, not that I'm going to care, I won't, but I don't want the town to look back at this board saying, Jesus, look at, look at this sweet deal. They put up, they put up $108,000 and it's costing the town because you're no longer here, $463,000. I don't want to be that bored. That's all I'm trying to do.
So with all due respect, is there, is there an inflation number that you would like? I'd hate for this to just keep getting continued because we don't agree on what the number is.
No, it won't continue again, we're going to continue tonight, I presume. My goal is to the next meeting...
There's got to be a way rather than guessing.
Yeah, no, no, I want to do his...
We're not, we're not guessing, there is a formula associated with there, and it's that 2% inflation rate each year to get to that number, that's the calculation there. But what I'm, what I'm hearing is that 2% is just too low.
All right, Town of Foxborough, I did a road bond. Town of Foxborough did a road bond, it was like 1.2 million, whatever it was, all right? In five years, that's gone up 20%. That bond has increased 20%. Five years. 20 years, 20 times four, that's, that'd be, that would be 80% increase. So your 100-something thousand would go, I mean, yeah, your 70-something thousand would go to like 400 grand, if you use the Town of Foxborough.
But we're not, we're not using 20%, we're using 2%.
No, no, well, all I'm saying to you is, I'm just using a base, I'm using a comparison.
There's got to be a formula that tells, that's about my degree.
I just don't want the town 20 years from now to be caught, you know, on the short side.
With, with all due respect, the peer reviewer agreed with the decommissioning estimate, just asked for that 25% contingency.
Well, I don't agree, I agree with you, Ron.
Between now and your next meeting, I will put the effort into it, it won't be, and I'll, and I'll talk to you before that so you can answer my questions, trying to get this thing brought to an end at the next meeting that you...
Yeah, that's just what we're, we're asking for. If there's a number, a specific inflation rate that you're looking to see, that's what will add to the decommissioning estimate.
Totally understand. My goal is that the next meeting, to be able, you can answer before that, and we can get together before that happens.
Okay.
I don't want to, I don't want to keep continuing, that's not how this board does it.
Question, so, I mean, I understand, we want to wait, we have...
We're waiting to know what it is. Go ahead.
There's questions from the peer reviewer, which he put together, and we believe, we responded to, we gave him exactly what he asked for. And then, I guess also, the question is for the bond, which obviously we don't do until we're basically close to construction. I mean, we are here tonight, so is, it's possible if like these things could be set aside as like conditions for approval?
There's no way, in my mind, that we could do it. We don't make conditions of approval of a peer review. I mean, Mr. Pesci could come back to your answer and say, I disagree with the four answers you gave me, they're totally wrong, and this is how I see it, and where does that put the board? You know, there's just no way we can deal with, in my opinion, a peer review.
Agreed.
I mean, if it was a plan that you didn't dot an i across it, I'd be more than happy to work with you, but when a peer review, we, you know, none of us are engineers and we try to listen to that.
I think maybe it might be beneficial to get in touch with Ed also to say, what is $70,000 over 20 years?
I think I've got some other thoughts, too, that might be...
I know, you can figure it out.
My point is this, it's going to be, it's not going to be shooting from the hip, it's going to be a real factual, this is...
A real number.
And it's not going to be a questionable number, it's going to be, this is what it was, and this is what it can...
But I think they need to know that.
Well, I'm going to do that before we even come back, I'm going to interact with them before that and say, this is what I think it should be.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I mean, my, our goal is the board, right, it's the next time to deal with this, if in fact, Mr. Pesci brings it to an end, and they bring it to an end with peer review.
Exactly.
We don't want to keep kicking this down the road.
Yeah, we're not trying to kick it down the road. I mean, it makes sense, this whole proposal makes sense, it's how do we get to an approval, right?
Yes.
That's all we're trying to do.
No, and I, I think we're both on the same page, just what we're asking for, and I think what you're saying you're going to give us is your idea of what you're looking for, for that inflation rate. You just, essentially, you just don't agree with 2% is, is what we're saying right now.
That is, that is correct. And what I'm going to do is, prior to this meeting that you're going to agree to, to extend till, I will give you my input, then we'll have a conversation or whatever before then, so it can be worked out that it makes some sense, so I can say to this board, I got the information from so-and-so who does this all the time, they do bonds, blah, 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 and I went to you, and this is how it worked out.
Yep.
But I, because I, I just don't see 70-something become 103. I mean, a million dollars became 1.2 in about two years. You're talking 20 years.
Right.
I don't know how I went from a million to a million-two, but it was real quick.
How does Pesci determine when it's going to be decommissioned? The useful life of the project?
So the project life, so we, when we put these together, we come to, we have agreements with the utility, and they say we will purchase, we will purchase power from this development for 20 years.
Okay.
Originally, back in the day, you know, the lifespan of a solar panel, it had a heavy degradation over a period. Now, a lot of the solar panels give you basically guarantees that say that after 20% or, excuse me, 20 years lifespan of the panel, it will only degrade by, you know, a maximum of 10%. You know, 20 years ago, your degradation could have been all the way up to like 50 to 60%.
I guess I'm getting to where Ron is, what we're looking at, either from you or from Pesci, is at whatever point in time the useful life of this project ends, do we get a figure now as to what it will cost then to take it down?
That's what's included in the...
That's what we want to do. There's, there's two components to this increase. You're talking about a 2%, which is what, inflate, I don't even know if it's...
It's inflation.
All right, so there's inflation, 2%. I get it. But we all know that construction sometimes is way over inflation, sometimes under inflation. Historically, it's been a lot of times over inflation, I mean...
But I mean, if you're talking materials, like, yes, materials, what's we have with...
But that's not...
But there's no materials, decommission is just basically tearing it down.
But even labor, sometimes labor has not been inflationary against, followed inflation. My point is this, I'm sure we'll come, come up with something. I feel very confident. I just don't know if it's going to be 2%.
That's, that's...
Understood.
We're just looking for that gap.
And I'm not trying to ruin the project, I'm not trying to crimp the project so it doesn't make a living and make money for the people it's supposed to make money for. I just don't want the town in a bad, bad place.
Yep.
Because it's going to have to be decommissioned someday.
Well, and it's not, it's not a guarantee that that will have to be on the town, this is just in place as a safety mechanism in case NextGrid is not there in 20 years.
I think the town has to look at it, that it's, everything, that's what a bond's about, right? We have to look at it as, you're no longer here.
Right.
And how are we going to, as a town, deal with this decommission? That's how we have to look at it.
Understood.
And it's nothing against you, it's just the way we have to look at it.
Understood.
All right.
Yeah, are there any other questions you guys want to talk, I mean, we are here.
No, I, I...
We can wait until you guys come back.
I just want to hear Pesci's stuff.
Yeah. So just get the information, Mary Ann, you and I will interact, and I will interact with him, and once Pesci answers your question, make sure that I get a copy of it, and then I'll interact with you or whoever.
And sorry, when is the next hearing?
You can be it.
We're in October.
You saw his final comment, right?
October 8.
There's no September hearings?
There is, but it's booked, totally.
Yeah, I did see that.
We unfortunately only meet once a month now.
Okay. There's no flexibility with September.
When is it?
October 8.
October 8?
That's the same one that Mr. Wall was attending, yeah.
It's going to be another long one.
You're going to have to listen to that again, too.
So, you know, wish it would be sooner, but, all right, so you okay extending till October 8?
I guess if that's our only option.
I think it's the only option.
It's our earliest option.
I'm willing to stay late on September.
Um...
We'll buy dinner for everyone.
I don't, well, that's illegal, we can't do that.
I will put dinner back there, and you happen to enjoy it.
Yeah.